We're gonna go ahead and get started, okay. Good morning. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law in section one oh one point zero two one of the codified ordinance of Cleveland, Ohio nineteen seventy six, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the city planning department conducts its meetings according to Robert's rules of order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meetings has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. Chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. Call in users can unmute by using star six. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter via our website and email have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Madam Chair, the meeting is yours.
Um, thank you. Good morning, everyone, and let's take the roll.
Bowen. Downing.
President.
Booker. Curry.
President.
McCray Scott.
President.
Paul. Slife.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have a call.
Oh, thank you. Um, today, just for all the the people who will be speaking um and throughout the design review items, and I ask that people move efficiently through their presentations today and really focus on those items that are relevant uh to the City Planning Commission. Um, so exterior, those those issues that may have been raised by design review um as items that uh required further consideration um so that we can move efficiently through the agenda today. So please try to stay brief as we get through this very um long agenda. So first item is a special presentation. Uh Northeast two zero two one zero three one five point streetscape mural. It's seeking final approval. Uh, and is Crystal Sierra here to speak about this?
She is.
Okay, can I ask um for these items? Uh, I'm not required to swear anyone in for the items, these items, correct? Are these design review items? Michael. Okay.
Yeah, no, we do not swear in anyone for these sorts of um projects.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to confirm.
So let me introduce this. Um, this was uh approved by Northeast Design Review last week um based on a condition from a previously tabled uh uh result. And they have made those adjustments since then. It's also had a uh high level of community engagement. And the mural is actually part of a larger streetscape project. This is in Ward ten in Collinwood. Um, I support the project and the level of engagement, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Crystal to go over the details. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Crystal Sierra here from Greater Collinwood presenting the five point streetscape uh mural today. Uh, next slide, please. The five point streetscape project aims to implement the recommendations of the twenty eighteen Saint Clair corridor study conducted by City Planning Commission uh with support from Councilman Anthony Hairston and Councilman Michael Klonzik. Funded by the Cuyahoga County Community Development Supplemental Grant, the five point streetscape project phase one is a fifty thousand dollar investment by way of G C D C R organization and includes installation of public art, uh bike racks, place making banners, crosswalk restriping, and vegetation control. Through place making, public art, and beautification, the project aims to elevate and preserve the Five Points identity uh while also encouraging motorists and visitors to slow down and explore rather than drive through. Next slide, please. In December twenty nineteen and December through January twenty twenty one, G C D C hosted a series of public meetings to announce its intent to submit a proposal to Cuyahoga County uh for the Community Development Supplemental Grant for Grant Years twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Greening, public art, identity code enforcement, and spaces for using community engagement were all topics of priority for the intersection. Each of the four public meetings uh was preceded by a notice of public meeting issued seven days prior. Next uh slide, please. G C D C has set established a committee of five community members, business owners, and stakeholders from wards eight and ten um in June twenty twenty to review and score submissions uh for banner design and public art as part of the project. That committee helped to guide scoring criteria uh for the design selection. Um, artist Erin Williams was chosen for the Five Points Public Art Mural and for the Banner Design. Next slide, please. So this slide um contains uh Erin Williams' portfolio. His recent collaborations include the Black Lives Matter mural with graffiti heart at ninety third and Bessemer. The Green Palette project with Waterloo Arts on Waterloo Road. Inside Out with Contrast High Pop Life and Culture Jock at Waterloo. Um, he recently had a solo show at the Museum of Contemporary Art that ran through uh August fifteenth. Next slide, please. Um, so the Five Points Public Art Mural will be installed at um one four eight two oh Saint Clair Avenue. Um, it's to be painted on the east facing facade of the building. Uh, the wall will be power washed prior to installation to give a smooth surface. Um, and um, the the artist is going to make use of the existing texture by using a stain um as backdrop. Next slide, please. Um, so the dimensions of this wall is fifteen foot by sixty six uh feet. Uh aerosol and outdoor like latex paint will be used. Uh anti graffiti coating will be applied at the time of installation. And then these two images to the right provide um some contextual views. At the top, this is the east facing wall. And then at the bottom, the little red indicator is where that location is in relation to the Five Points intersection. Next slide, please. These are a couple more contextual photos. On the left, that is a um southwest facing view of the building. And then on the right, um, that is a um. I'm sorry, the the photo on the left is an east southeast facing image, and the photo on the right is a west facing image from Saint Clair. Next slide, please. So this is the um concept for the mural. Um, it's an artistic rendering of Aaron's um hands with an excerpt from On the Pulse of the Morning by Maya Angelou. The open hand or five hand gesture is a reference to the Five Points intersection and extends to the top of the building to express that the sky is the limit. A fist represents self-love and strength, and then the Maya Angelou um quotation was actually um recited at two presidential inaugurations. Next slide, please. And that concludes the presentation um for the Five Points mural. Um, uh, East one fifty second and Saint Clair Avenue. Thank you. Mission members, any questions?
I move approval, Downing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, can we take the roll, please?
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Trey Scott.
F.
Slife.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Motion carries. It's a beautiful mural. Um, actually, I really like it a lot and uh love the design. So thank you very much for the thoughtful presentation. Uh, next item.
This next project, uh Life is Sharing the Same Park Bench Mural and many park enhancements. I'm very excited to introduce um this particular mural at East Ninth and Rockwell. Um, was commissioned by uh former mayor Carl Stokes, who we all know is the first uh African American elected mayor in a major city. Um, back in nineteen sixty nine, he commissioned John Francis Morel for this mural. It was approved at uh with conditions at the downtown Flash Design Review on August nineteenth. Um, the condition was with regard to um the park space, not the mural itself. Um, and uh, I believe this is the oldest mural in Cleveland or one of the oldest. Um, it was uh refurbished back in nineteen ninety-three. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to Greg Peckham from Land Studio to give you more particulars. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Um, that's a great, a great summary to to get us started. And I just want to point out um that the um the approval that we're seeking is actually for the improvements to the to the small park space in front. Um, I'll talk a little bit about the mural because that's sort of the catalyst for for the project. Um, this is um, we at Land Studio are having our our tenth anniversary as an organization. So we um identified a handful of projects and collaborations with different artists that we wanted to uh to do to really sort of thank folks in Cleveland for their support of of our work for uh for the last ten years. Um, and so this is one of the projects that that we identified as part of that. Um, just to give you a little uh sense of the location, it's on East Ninth Street at the corner of Rockwell. Um, you can go to the next slide, please. Um, this is a street level view. Uh, there's a hotel on the left, and there's the mural as it is today on the right hand side with a small um very small sort of mini park right in right in front of of the mural space. Go ahead to the next slide. Um, so the the mini park is Pocket Park is owned by the City of Cleveland. Um, and the wall uh where the mural sits is actually a privately owned building um with the uh owned by the Bischof Company. Um, and they have been very supportive of this project so far. You can go to the next slide. Um, John Morel, this is um some images of work that he has done um across the city. Um, largely in the in the sixties and seventies, he was sort of a prolific artist, and a lot of his work dealt with um issues of uh social justice and inclusion and tolerance um and these types of things. And this piece um is probably one of um if not the only re- uh remaining piece um in Cleveland. And so we've we've had a wonderful time um getting to know his family. He passed away uh a number of years ago. The majority of his family is in upstate New York, um and they have shared with us his uh his entire archive. And you see some images of other works that were done um around Cleveland over the years. Um, so we're, they are very excited about um, you know, kind of honoring him and this this artwork and bringing it back. You can go to the next slide. Um, just a little bit more from from their archive. Uh, this is the original press release which uh which talks about it, but you get a sense of um, you know, this was a, as as Tara said, this was one of the the earliest large scale uh downtown murals in Cleveland, and it had a lot of sort of hype at the at the time. You can go to the next slide. Um, just pulled out a couple important um, you know, pieces about this that, as as Tara said, um, that this was really dedicated um to uh to the mayor and his commitment to this idea of brotherhood within Cleveland. Um, and there's a few quotes about it, you know, um, features uh twenty twenty-six foot figures on a park bench and elder than man, um, a middle aged man, a Negro. Of course, this is a, you know, a moment in time, uh and a woman holding a baby. And the left end of the the bench is vacant, um presumably for um inviting people to to sit there as well. Um, and the quote from the mayor on the right hand side says, this mural will be a symbol of what we want this city to be about, uh and that is brotherhood. And we thought that this was a really, um, you know, you know, unfortunately, the message is as timely today as it was back in nineteen sixty-nine. So we thought it's appropriate to uh to bring it back to life. You can go to the next slide. Um, also, as as Tara mentioned, that it in the early nineties, there was a plan to uh replace the mural, to paint it over. Um, and that was met with a huge amount, uh as we can understand it, of of objection uh to losing this sort of iconic part of the the cityscape. So it was um, it was, the last time it was touched was nineteen ninety-three, so you see the second mayor there um after Mayor Stokes, Mayor White um sort of rededicating the mural um again with the artist in in nineteen ninety-three. You can go to the next slide. Um, so this is the the mural as it is today in the small park in front. It has um a couple of the rock halls, rock boxes um that play music every hour on the hour. Um, but it's really kind of a a bit of a leftover space. You can go ahead to the next image. Um, this one sort of just zooms in to give you a sense of the condition. Um, you know, this, it's, it still looks okay. Um, but I think that we are sort of at risk of this kind of really starting to deteriorate faster. So in addition to repainting it, we will also be dealing with sort of some of the sort of structural needs of the uh of the piece itself. You can go to the next slide. Um, we have um engaged Alan Guyberson, who is a a local uh Cleveland artist and a sign painter. Um, you've probably seen some of his his work around the city. Um, in the top right is uh uh Love Loons Over Buckeye. Um, some other uh images of his work. He's, I think, one of the, you know, great young people who's keeping the the craft of hand painted signs um alive in Cleveland. So we're excited to work with him and sort of um, you know, have him kind of bring this back to its original uh condition. You can go to the next slide. Um, so this is the the part that is really of, you know, kind of in interest to this group. Um, these are what we're planning in terms of the enhancements to the uh to the park space in front of the mural. Go ahead to next slide. Um, this is just a quick streetscape view, and just as a point of reference, um Jim McKnight from the mayor's office of Capitol Projects. Um, we've been working closely with him as well as Commissioner DeRosa um to kind of pull the pieces of this project together. So the work that you're gonna see here is prepared by uh by Jim McKnight and at the city. So you can go to the next slide. Um, the irony of irony in front of the park bench mural, there are no park benches. Um, there was when it was done originally, these little notches cut out that had park benches, they were removed at some point. Um, so our plan, you can go to the next slide, is to bring those back. Um, so we, there's a a small gravel area on the left of the screen. We're gonna be installing a new uh picnic table. There will be four backless benches that we'll show you in a second um along the site, um allowing people to look at, look at the mural or sit at the streetscape with the mural behind them. Um, a little bit of ground cover and a and a handful of of new trees. Um, so we're just, you know, really kind of refreshing this space. You can go to the next image, please. Um, this was the original plan that uh that Jim put back together. Um, as as Tara mentioned, um, the uh design review committee, the one major comment that they had is they wanted to see sort of uh the ability to sort of access the site um from from more than one place. So if you go to the next slide, there was the space that they said, you know, it might be nice um to allow people to pass through this this area. Um, you can go to the next slide. So Jim McKnight updated the plan, as you see it here, um to allow for um for people to come in and out. We're not doing any sort of uh pathways or anything. This is a very small space. You know, people come in and they, you know, might have lunch or have a cup of coffee, walk their dog through, but um it really doesn't need uh much more than than sort of these basic amenities that we're adding to it. So you can go to the next slide. Uh, and the, this is the uh the furniture collection that that Jim has picked out for the project. Some very, very simple, modern um uh site furnishings. These are the benches and uh the picnic table that's that's going to be there. Um, and that's it. So we're really just trying to kind of create a a bit of a um, you know, a space out of a leftover little corner. Um, but I think it uh the combination of landscaping, the site amenities, and the restoration of the mural um should make a nice uh improvement to that corner and really, I think, celebrate that artwork that has uh, you know, been such an important part of the cityscape for so long and bring it back um and refresh it. So our hope is to start the project in mid-September um and finish it uh for a kind of celebration and rededication of the mural on the ninth of October. Um, both, as I mentioned, the mayor, uh the mayor's family, as well as the family of the artist, have been um engaged and and in conversation with us uh about this project for the last several months. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Commission members, any questions or comments?
Uh, this is Diane. Um, as a special assignment, I was in charge of bringing um the mural back to life in nineteen ninety-three. Uh, and actually, the artist, when I worked for Mayor White and the artist, uh John Morel was alive at that time, and we were able to bring him in for the first rededication. So um, I didn't realize, I didn't remember what year, uh but I'm so glad that um it's being restored again. So um, I would like to move approval uh as another part of history is restored in Cleveland. Thank you.
And I, and I second.
You have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Um, okay, let's take the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Motion carries. Um, and I agree with Diane. This is wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a, have a great long weekend, everybody.
Okay, uh, just as a point of note going forward, and this is to Freddie and team. Um, I think these items that are not city murals, but they are park projects or even murals that are in design review districts technically do belong at the end of the agenda because they go to local design review and they also have outside presenters who should be sworn in. So I'm gonna suggest that this be revisited, um not for today, but going forward. Um, that these items belong in the design review section going forward unless they're city projects, which these are not. Um, and uh, and they should be sworn in. Um, so if someone can explore that from the planning commission side, I'd appreciate it. Um, so thank you. Um, and then the next item is special presentation. Um, Old Brooklyn Blooms mural project two zero two one dash zero two nine. Uh, and this is at four three seven seven State Road. Um, and I think we have two people here to speak to this.
Yes, um, there's actually three locations for this project. It's a neighborhood wide project. And um, it was approved uh at Near West Design Review on August twenty-fifth. Um, both artists are uh local artists, Eileen Dorsey and Garrett Wyder. Uh, both of them have done other work around the city. Um, the one uh location, the design review committee had uh wanted the mural to be painted on panels instead of directly on the brick facade because of some transom windows that um are on the building. And so um, I'm in support of this project as well, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Eileen and um uh Garrett, and this is in um wards thirteen and twelve. Thank you.
Hello, um, thank you, Tara. Um, hello, everyone, and thank you for uh having us today. Um, so we are presenting three murals in the Old Brooklyn neighborhood. And the concept is to uh solidify the branding of the neighborhood, which is a great place to to grow. And so we're gonna be presenting um organic uh flower murals for the uh to put in the neighborhood to not only um create a more beautiful place and a welcoming uh space for the neighborhood, but to solidify the branding. Um, uh, next slide, please. Um, and so, yeah, so basically, it it goes along with that concept, and the the murals will be flowers growing, and they are not only going to uh solidify the branding, but create a almost uh a reason for uh passerby's to stop and maybe take a photo opportunity. And while they're there, support the local businesses, and each of the murals are approximately eleven by uh nine feet, uh either vertical or horizontal. Uh, next slide, please. We've included some of our own work. Um, like Tara said, we will be collaborating, and these are actually my works. Um, as you can see, I uh I specialize in uh landscape oriented works, lots of trees, lots of plants. And you can see examples of that here. Next slide, please. And Garrett Wyder uh also has been working with uh several other neighborhoods and making, creating murals around town. Currently is working on um a very large scale, two hundred plus wide foot um uh mural in on the Puritist wall in um off of like Puritism, uh first, I think. Uh, next slide, please. And here's a, and for um uh the state road, you can see where uh the street view and where the uh we've um used the red to indicate the portion of the wall that we're using. Uh, next slide, please. And here's another street view, so you can see how um people will be viewing it. Next slide, please. And this will just give you a better idea where it's located in the city. Next slide, please. And this is the our artistic rendering. We've in uh, so we're using the uh branding colors for the business. This is on Gus's, and their brand colors are orange, black, and like a uh, like a like an almond color. So we've incorporated all those in that, and we will be doing that for each of the businesses. We're keeping that in mind. And um, next slide, please. And this is the second location, which is um where it's on Broad Huey Avenue. We are actually painting over an um existing sign, and you can see where it's located. Next slide, please. And another street view of this Broad Huey location. Next slide, please. And you see where it's located on the map. Next slide, please. And this is the rendering. So the business are, the business that is located there is a cigar um shop. And we've taken tobacco leaves and tobacco flowers and used it in this rendering. Uh, so we were helping, so we're still continuing with the uh a great place to grow and the flower theme, but we're also incorporating something that's personal to the business. Okay, and the next slide, please. This is our third location, uh Stanford Avenue. Uh, the, this is located next to the Six City Cycle, which is a bicycle and plant shop. And I'm mentioning that because the design is relevant. Uh, next slide, please. And you can see at the corner uh in the windows is the um Six Cities uh cycle, which you can see the wall is located in the red in the background. Next slide, please. And this is where you could view it um from the main, I, that's rural, I believe. So you could see that it's gonna be visible on the side from the main uh street. Next slide, please. And here's the rendering. So we wanted to uh we, we wanted to keep with like something that's photogenic, people could take pictures with. But we are definitely keeping in mind the businesses that are around there, so we, we use the the blue background to already go with the um the wall, and we use um something more a little botanical, so it matches or kind of um solidifies the branding for that specific corner. So, and I I believe that's the last slide.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Um, commission members, uh, any questions or comments? And then I need to ask, do we need three motions or one for this? To Michael?
Uh, I think one would be sufficient, honestly.
Okay.
I'll move approval, Downing.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Um, I think these are beautiful, by the way, very, very beautiful, and love the color um alignment a lot. So thank you. Um, let's call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we're moving on. I don't think we have any zoning map amendments. Uh, no townhouse, no lot splits. Uh, no townhouse, no lot splits, which is unusual. Uh, so mandatory referrals. Um, this is ordinance number six eight four dash two zero two one. Authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to issue one or more permits to Muldoons. To encroach upon the public right of way of East one hundred and eighty fifth Street. Uh, is there someone from the city to speak to this?
Uh, good morning, Rick Swetolski, uh, manager, engineering construction.
Okay.
Thank you. The, this encroachment perm uh, request is from Aldoons Restaurant in order to maintain existing asphalt pavement, fence, brick wall and building canopies. Uh, that of their restaurant. Uh, we need to get this uh, encroachment done as we're coming up with the East one hundred eighty fifth Street project starting uh, in the near future. And we have to make sure the right of way is free of all um. All, all things that aren't, that's the right word. Can't have encroached, you have to have encroachments be in the right of way. So we need to have this taken care of.
Okay, um, is this the, the drawing?
Right, that you see the shaded area, that's where the, it's actually on both sides of Mazina Drive along one hundred eighty fifth.
Right.
They've encroached into the right of way over years. So we have to make sure we clear the right of way. Of all obstacles that are there that aren't part of the right of way. And the way to do that in this situation is through an encroachment.
Okay. Um, mission members.
Um, Chair, got a question. Would that impact the uh, amount of like sidewalk space, Rick?
No, the director, nothing's changed than what's out, than what is out there currently.
Okay.
What you see now is what is there and all this does is make it legal.
But there is, I think the question Freddie's asking is there's still the minimum requirement that is clear from the remaining sidewalk?
That's correct. Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Um, okay, uh, let's take the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, thank you, Rick. Uh, next item.
Have one more.
Okay, you're welcome to stay for as many as you have. So uh, if you can go back, uh, Resolution six nine three dash two zero two one. Uh, declaring a portion or the intent of to vacate a portion of Rawlings Avenue between seventy fifth Street and seventy ninth Street. A portion of Holton Avenue between seventy fifth Street and seventy ninth Street and a portion of seventy eighth Street from the south sideline to Holton Avenue. Uh, to the south lines of subplot eighty four and seventy five. I'm sure you'll explain all this to us.
Yes, as we go through the slides, it become clearer. Uh, the Department of Economic Development has been engaged in the acquisition and assembly of property in and around Opportunity Corridor. In order to make properties available for future development, various independent parcels will need to be consolidated and certain streets need to be vacated. If we can go to the, to the next slide, please. You can see the area that's being vacated. This is actually is all is meant for the use for the construction of the cold storage unit that um. Orlando will be putting in, but I think it's going to be the largest uh, east of the Mississippi. So this area is where they will be building it and I think they're breaking ground uh, by the, before the end of the year.
Okay.
And Madam Chair too, this is the uh, area too that we uh, rezone for the purpose of this facility. We also made sure that all of the parcels along seventy ninth to the east of the cold storage facility. Remain open for community and neighborhood development to ensure that seventy ninth Street remains walkable.
Okay, commission members, any questions?
I'll move.
We have two motions. And then a second, motion by, by Diane and second by Councilman's life. Um, any further questions? Okay, let's take the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Uh, next item.
Thank you. Have a nice weekend.
Thank you, Rick. Have a nice holiday.
Thank you.
Mandatory referrals ordinance number six nine five dash two zero two one. Authorizing the mayor and the commissioner of purchases, purchases and supplies. To acquire and reconvey properties presently owned by Fairfax Renaissance Development Corporation. On the west side of East one hundred and fifth Street for the purpose of entering into chain of title before uh, TIF financing legislation. Someone here from ED?
Yep, good morning. So uh, this ordinance authorizes uh, this uh, entering into the chain of title in order to implement a non-school TIF. Um, to support the Innovation Square Project. Um, the project's uh, first phase will be about eighty units. Um, a mix of market rate and workforce housing, um, complements the neighboring development of um. A grocery store as part of a mixed use project there at one hundred and fifth Street and Cedar. And so uh, as part of um, the financing for the project, the city's off. Uh, providing a non-school TIF will be providing a loan for the project as well.
Okay, any further questions? Motion.
I move approval Downing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, we take the roll.
Downing.
Yeah.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, thank you, uh, Director. Uh, next item is mandatory referrals ordinance number six nine six dash two zero two one. Authorizing the mayor and commissioner of purchases and supplies to acquire and reconvey property presently owned by the live-in group. Um, for the blanket mills project, um, uh, for the purpose of entering into chain of title. Um, so I do have to pause here. Um, I think the Cleveland Foundation isn't involved in this project. So um, uh, we had, have been looking at a potential um, loan. So I need to ask, should uh, Diane maybe chair this portion and I will uh, abstain? Diane, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that. Um, who do we have uh, speaking to this item?
Um, me again. I got this one and the next one too, so um. I get same, same type of ordinance. This will authorize entering into the chain of titles precedent to a non-school TIF. Um, the redevelopment of the Blanket Mills Building is a mixed use uh, project, thirty five thousand square foot of commercial space. Um, which the Centers for Family and Children will occupy, um, as well as sixty affordable housing units. Um, mix of one, two and three bedrooms. Um, the city's providing a uh, non-school TIF to support the project as well as a loan. Um, to get this project moving. Um, exciting project and happy to support it.
Okay, any questions from commission members?
Move approval.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, would you call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
I have Commissioner Curry as abstaining. McCray Scott.
Yeah.
Life.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item.
I think you should take this one as well, the similar.
All right, thank you. Um, ordinance number six nine seven dash twenty twenty one, fourteen, Councilmember Santana. Authorizing the mayor and the commissioner of purchases and supplies to acquire and reconvey properties presently owned by. Northeast Ohio Hispanic Center for Economic Development, or its designee. Located in the West Twenty Fifth Street and Clark Avenue area for the purpose of entering into the chain of title prior. To the adopt, adoption of tax increment financing legislation authorized under section five seven oh nine. Point four one of the revised code of, for the Centro, Centrovia twenty five project. David, are you here to speak?
I am.
Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, again, same, same thing. This authorizes us to uh, enter into the chain of title prior to implementing a non-school TIF. Um, the project here is a really innovative project focused on on uh, development of the uh. Area there around West Twenty Fifth Street and Clark with um, uh, business focus on the um. Uh, Cleveland Hispanic Community Hispanic Business Center taking the lead on this really. Um, a mix of retail kiosks, uh, commercial kitchen, um, small grocery space, um, gathering space as well as the offices for. Metro West and Hispanic Business Center. Uh, the city is providing a non-school TIF to support the project as well as some additional um, loan and grants. Um, for the project. Uh, been working on this one for a while and glad to see it's moving forward.
Any questions from commission members? Can I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
My second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Downing.
Yes.
Hurry.
Abstain.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
The motion is approved. Thank you. Next.
Thank you.
Um, okay, thank you. I'm good now. Thank you very much. Um, wait, uh, we are taking this one, I understand. Um, and uh, there isn't someone to speak to it, but it's pretty straightforward. This is ordinance number seven one three dash two zero two one. Uh, this is ordinance change the name of the Ken Johnson Recreation Center to the Woodland Recreation Center. Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do want to make a comment. Uh, Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, unfortunate um, circumstance and proposal. Um, but I know oh, um, the uh, emphasis behind this and um, I know this is a. A tough one, you know, for uh, someone who served for uh, many years. Um, and it's unfortunate uh, the outcome uh, of that uh, individual's career. Think there was a lot of good uh, that was done and also know that, you know, uh, situations happen. And um, this is unfortunate, but I understand necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's call the roll.
Downing. Sorry, Diane.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Uh, administrative approvals. Um, if you could um, maybe just uh, go through these slowly, we can take a look at them. Wait, can I see the last one? Okay, okay. Um, any questions about any of the administrative approvals?
I move approval Downing.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Uh, let's uh, take the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Okay, um, and we're going to move into design review, so I'll need to swear in the applicants for these items. Um, also going to ask the applicants um, to, to please try to keep the presentation succinct and focused on. The exterior, the parking, landscaping, the things that are the purview of this commission and especially the items that may have been. Uh, uh, put into the motions of the design review. Um, if you could go back, I just need to read the title of this one. Um, this is a F, uh, the two zero two one dash zero two zero. Cam's Corner Medical Building renovation and addition seeking final approval. Um, and uh, anyone speaking to this, if you could um, uh, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as usual answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, it's all yours.
Hi, uh, this is Gary Fisher with Fisher and Associates Architects. Um, I see that Sam is on, I. I see he's still muted, so we may want to have him. That's the owner of the building. Yes. Okay, so Sam. Okay.
Hi, guys.
Um, so this uh, is an existing property. There's an existing one-story medical building on this site. Very low ceilinged interior buildings and has been abandoned for a few years. Uh, and the proposal is to uh, basically redo the entire building, add two floors to it. Uh, there will be three apartments on the second floor and then the top floor will be um. Uh, a pool area for the owners. The owners will actually live in the building. They'll have a, a large apartment on the second floor. As well as there are two separate rental apartments up there. The first floor will be returned to medical offices. Um, the parking lot remains the same. Um, exterior of the building will be some Nietzsche ha materials. We can move to the slides of the elevations if you want to get to those. Continue down. Thank you. There's uh. The uh, Lorraine Road elevation is at the top of the sheet. The. Uh, west elevation, sorry about that. The west elevation is at the bottom of the sheet. If you want to go to the next slide and then we can look at some renderings. I think that will portray it better. Uh, this is the elevation to the north and the elevation to the east is at the bottom of the sheet. Want to move uh, through these and go to the next slide. This is actually just a site plan showing some of the existing conditions. There are some street trees were purport, um, proposing, excuse me, some simple lawns out in front. Uh, with some low shrubs at the entrances, the. There are entrances and glass along the Lorraine roadside. However, the entrances to the actual offices will be at the rear of the building. As will the entrances to the um, apartments. Next slide. So this is the massing of the building. We have a, a uh, stack stone on the lower portion. The second floor then, which is the residential floor, actually overhangs the front of the building by about three feet. Um, and then it has a lighter stone material and then the top floor goes back to more of a, and I'm sorry, this turned out a little green on the image. It's a little more charcoal colored. Um, and that is actually the pool house up on the roof. Go to another slide to change views if you'd like. That is street view. You can see a little bit of the overhang and the two balconies out there. Right now, the offices on the first floor, if you'd go back, there we go. Uh, the offices, there we go, perfect. The offices along the first floor are not currently rented, however, they are getting requests for it. Um, we've been working with uh, Sam and his family for about two years to uh, get this project moving. Obviously COVID and. Pricing has been kind of an issue, but uh, we're through those hurdles and they're ready to get started on this project. And I will be happy to answer any questions. These are some street views. Uh, this is looking to the east, looking to the west. You can see this, the streets are fairly wide. Um, there's the, the context is relatively far away.
Commission members, any questions?
Is the councilman in support of this?
I, I am and uh, you know, I think that there's a lot of um, you know, older medical buildings kind of of this era in town. So I, I, I hope that this is the beginning of a precedent to, to bring some new life to some of these buildings, which really they kind of lower ceilings and aren't well suited for. Uh, kind of modern medical equipment. Um, I know a letter was submitted also by.
kind of modern medical equipment. I know a letter was submitted also by the Development Corporation in support, so with that, I will move approval with the conditions put forth by design review, which are in our packet.
We have no issue with those.
And I will second. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Please take the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
So thank you, motion carries. I agree with you, Councilman. Nice to add a little density, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Southeast Design Review, Entrada at Woodhill Heights Townhouse, new construction. This is at two, seven, two, zero, Martin Luther King Drive. Andrew, is there anyone else here to speak to? I need to swear you in. Is there someone to speak to this item? There you are. To tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do. Andrew's on, he was just muted, I think.
Yeah, I apologize for that. I just wanted to say thank you for having us this morning. So we have Danny Glimcher, who's on our team from Glimcher Capital Group, who will be speaking as well, as well as Gary Niola from Cornerstone Architecture.
You, can I hear a yes from all of you real quick?
Yes.
Yes.
The other two, maybe?
I think you got it. Me and Gary, are you on?
He might be muted.
All right, well, go ahead, and then we'll, like, need to speak. Otherwise, you guys are in charge, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So Entrada is, we're seeing to get approved forty-two unit townhouse project. Each unit's approximately nineteen hundred and fifty gross square feet, two-story built in side-by-side configurations. We tried to give the buildings a very high design look, but while honoring architectural language that exists in the neighborhood, each unit is three bedrooms and three full bathrooms. One of the bedrooms and bathroom, been four bathrooms, is on the first floors, allowing residents to age in place and making them more accessible. It's kind of an open floor plan in the living room with attractively furnished kitchens and living rooms and what have you, stainless steel appliances. All of these homes will be built to Cleveland Green building standards. They're all net-zero ready homes, and with the addition of an optional solar product, you can make these net-zero homes. Each home has a two-car attached garage with a roof deck over the garage overlooking downtown Cleveland, and a wraparound front porch, which helps integrate these with the neighborhood as well. If you'd like, this, this project is also supported by Councilman Griffin. And if, I believe you have control of the slides. If you'd like, we have renderings here, so you can see around the tent, starting around slide ten. These are just, you know, photos of the context and what's around it, elevations, floor plans, and right there, those are the renderings. We've received schematic design approval from the local design review approval board. With that schematic, they wanted us to investigate the potential of donation of trees and things from the Cleveland Tree Plan, and they've put us, they've given us certain resources where we can see if we can potentially afford more trees here. We also, the last piece they wanted was these sidewalks, as you can see, that go out to the street. We used papers that were similar. We thought it was a nice design element. They wanted us to remove the spacing between those, so we've done that. And they wanted to see the gutter and lighting plans, which we have been working on investigating as well. And they wanted us, that separation wall in between the two units, that little fence, they wanted it to be more in the language of the existing architecture there, so we've taken those accent pieces from the kind of front slash side of the house, and we're going to make that little separating fence out of those as well. Our, our primary focus here has been to provide extraordinary high quality at a low enough price that, you know, everybody who's existing in the neighborhood now can afford these. So we are looking to sell these in the low to mid-two hundreds. We have also put very high-quality products in there. There's no vinyl siding. These are, the siding of the homes will be LP Smart side with fifty-year warranties. These are steel seam roofs, which also have fifty-year warranties and high durability ratings. And so, you know, for instance, in a home like this, if someone were to qualify for like greater university circle living, down payment assistance, somebody with that down payment could move into one of these homes for approximately eight hundred or so dollars a month, given that there's a tax abatement as well. So as I've said, it's been really strongly focused on affordability and quality, which has been certainly difficult in this, in this market environment with rising prices everywhere, but so far, we've been able to hold that line. And oh, before I forget, one other thing they mentioned at local design review board, under the little awnings over the front door and the porch, they wanted us to take out the little kind of copings underneath, so it's just more angular and speaks more to the kind of language of the roof, so in our next iteration, we will have that as well.
Thank you. Commission members? Any comments? I'll start with a comment. I think it's excellent, by the way. I really want to commend you. I think this speaks to the possibilities that it is, it is, you are capable of building a high-quality unit at affordable price with a really nice design that doesn't have to mimic kind of like, kind of kitschy or historic architecture. So I think this sets a really nice precedent, and I hope other people take a look at what you did, you did here across the city, honestly, so I wish you luck, but to my commission members, any other questions or comments? And I know this is for schematic approval.
Correct.
Yes, I have a question.
Yeah.
McCray Scott.
Yep.
How many square livable square feet is there within these units?
So the total unit's about nineteen hundred and fifty. The garage is four hundred, approximately. So you also get, you know, four hundred square foot rooftop, you know, kind of deck over the garage, but as far as internal living space, you're around fourteen, fifteen hundred.
Just to add to that, Danny, one of the things that's really, really important about this project is we do have a, a first-floor bedroom and full bath for people to age in place, which I think is unique for a product that exists in Cleveland, compared to a standard townhome where you would just walk up straight to a bedroom or a kitchen. Having that, that ability allows for people to age in place, which I think is really important, and this project is really trying to bridge the gap between the Larchmere neighborhood and the Woodland neighborhood, so it's a very important project to us as Key State is a mission, and of course, Glimcher Capital Group, so. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have one question and a comment, actually. So I want to echo what Chairwoman Curry alluded to, because it's very hard to hit that sweet spot. And there's always the excuse about the market and it being a weak market, and you can't do it, you know, and I think that you guys nailed it. And I know in some of the earlier discussions, I liked the fact that you turned those units that were along Britt Oval, because I guess they were originally on their side, and I know Marka Fields was very adamant about wanting to make sure that the units were facing Britt Oval because of that park space there. So I think that was a good move. So kudos to you guys for doing that. The other thing is just the price points. I think the price points, you know, weren't really, you know, well, you know, in this particular, you know, market. One question I do have with respect to the, these ground-level entries, can you talk a little bit about that? Was there any consideration for having any type of like porch element or lifting the units a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, we did look at that, you know, there, there's kind of both in the neighborhood that, you know, a lot of them are lifted, but there's also some precedent of the slab-on-grade. We just simply couldn't afford it and hit the price point, you know, concrete has gone through the roof like everything else. And to be honest with you, we loved the slab-on-grade notion for the accessibility, so we were very conscious of putting that, you know, third bedroom on the first floor, so residents could stay there, so, or, you know, a grandparent could move in, or mom or something like that could be with the family, and we wanted to make it easy for them to access their unit, and, and so that was really the thought process of that, so these can be generational homes. I mean, they're, they're built like tanks. I mean, they're ten-and-a-half-inch walls and things, so they, these should last a long, long time, and we wanted to make sure that the residents could be there as long as they wanted to.
Well, kudos to you guys.
Freddie, which is that when we did the design competition for Barrier-Free Cleveland for the new housing typologies, which was in Old Brooklyn, one of the big ahas I had was that this idea that when people build accessible units, they tend to not be beautiful, right? And so this, to me, strikes that, which is that you can't tell the difference between an accessible unit and a non-accessible unit. They're just all accessible, right? And it's a, just a new way of designing housing for all, right? So you don't have a few that are accessible and a few that aren't, or a few that have ramps and a few that don't, which put a stigma on particular units. And so I think this is actually the future of universal design, which is to make something beautiful that is accessible but doesn't identify an accessible unit. And so I actually hope there's more of it, and, and the, the, the spirit of that competition was to say that, that there is beauty in that, and I think that's what you have Key State, you've been able to do, which is extraordinary. So thank you.
Well, and thank you very much for that comment.
Thank you guys for being really thoughtful, you know, and I think a lot of, you know, development interests need to really pick apart those principles, you know, and, and start to apply them. And I think as a, you know, commission and as a staff, and I know we try to do this, is, you know, when we have these, you know, ideas, you know, we're not here to try to just police, you know, we're here to, you know, translate those principles into something tangible, and I think you guys did that, you know, hence some of the comments that Chairwoman Curry made, and that's the role here, so just good job overall with this.
Thank you very much.
So, commission members, any other questions or a motion?
I move approval incorporating the design review comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll look forward to seeing you for final approval when you're ready. Next item. Thank you.
You so much. We appreciate your time.
Have a good holiday.
Thank you. Our next item is Southeast Design Review, proposed demolition of a two-and-a-half-story structure, seeking final approval. This is at one, one, four, one, four, Union Avenue. Is Stephen here to speak to this?
Yes, Steve Billington from the Kyago Land Bank.
Um, I'm not sure. Do I need to swear Kyago Land Bank in? Well, I will anyway, just to be sure.
I think we would normally, yeah.
Yeah. Do, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, take it away.
All right, we have a proposed demolition of a two-and-a-half-story residential structure. I think there, is there a presentation available? All right, this is located at one, one, four, one, four, Union Avenue in the Mount Pleasant neighborhood. And why it's in the Mount Pleasant Design, Design District. The property is a, again, a two, two-and-a-half-story, single-family structure. It's located next to the gas station, Sunoco Gas Station. It's in a really kind of deplorable condition. This is an aerial view, kind of gives you a closer look as it relates to the gas station, a broader look as it sits in the neighborhood. You can go to the next slide, please. This is kind of a, a series of pictures from, from the neighborhood, kind of just showing where, where the, from the property's perspective almost. But there's, there's kind of like a diesel gas pump directly next to this fence, fenced area of this, of the house, it's kind of really close to the, to the property lines. Across the street, there's the Walgreens. So it's, it's really a, kind of one of the remaining houses in a, in a, what has become a more commercial district. If you go to the next slide, please. This is a look at the house from the exterior pictures. Just showing signs of wear over, over the years. There's a lot of trees and brush that have kind of just gone unchecked. We actually, since these pictures were taken, we've sent it through through to kind of cut back and trim the lawn and do other things. But there is still trees in the fence line along with the commercial property. The next slide, please. This is a kind of a sampling of pictures of the interiors, shows kind of from the attic, you can see through the roof, there's water damage throughout. It was full of debris and garbage. We've cleaned it out since then, and asbestos survey to look at to determine the viability of rehab. You don't, you don't see that this is a viable rehab. This is a picture of the basement, more interior pictures, sees that, shows that the utilities have been stripped. There's no HVAC otherwise. So our proposed site finish, it would be to demolish the property and plant grass in the short term, and we would be attempting to do the property back to the city of Cleveland for any future development possibilities.
Is there a curb cut? Will you be removing it?
The curb, we will not be. It's, it's kind of, the apron is part of the city sidewalk, and what we just tend to do in those situations is leave them so as not to kind of disturb the sidewalk. But it is actually at the same time saying that the, there is utility work being done, so with removal of the house, maybe the, maybe they would pour a sidewalk there when they replace the sidewalk. I don't know whose responsibility that would be. I guess we could, we could try to coordinate with the utility company. So that is generally our presentation on this, and I really open the floor for questions if anyone has.
Move approval. Downing.
We have a motion, second, anyone?
Second.
Second, Councilman Sly, call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
I think our preference would be to coordinate if you can, especially if there's a street skate project going on, I would say, because you know, if there is one, it might make sense, but I also don't want to make them do work that you might tear up later either, so I, I think it's just worth a conversation to see what's reasonable, so not going to require it, but, because I don't know what the future development is, but, but it's worth noting to the, if they really are doing sidewalk improvements there, that it might be worth it to, to talk about.
Yeah, I think it would be our preference as well. I think anything we can do to kind of prevent people from driving on sites.
Yes.
Support.
Okay, so we'll leave it up to you to check on that.
Yeah, I was under the impression, Lily, in that removal of aprons was a requirement of the permit.
It is. That's why I asked, but, I mean, that's why I asked, but I think the question around the street skate improvements is one that was valid, so I don't know how you feel about it. Charles, do you have an opinion?
I, 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 I agree with your, with your position.
Yeah. So, okay, well, if you could please just have a conversation about that for us, and, and if for some reason it makes sense to remove it, then if you guys could remove it, because it is a requirement when there is demos.
Okay.
All right, next item.
The next item, there's another, if we flip to the next slide, I suppose.
This is a demolition of a two-story apartment building at one, two, zero, one, zero, Union Avenue. Okay, go ahead.
But yeah, again, Steve Billington from the Kyago Land Bank. This is a apartment building located at one, two, zero, one, oh, Union Avenue, and it is, this is a picture of the exterior of the property. It's kind of been vacant for some time now. If you could switch, switch to the next slide, please. This is the aerial view of the property. It's kind of one of the remaining properties in this, on this corner. There's a church to the, to the east, and there's some other commercial. Um, and there's some other commercial buildings to the, to the west. Uh, there's actually a number of churches, a church across the street as well. You'll see it next slide. Um, if you could go to the next slide, please. Uh, this is kind of a look at the street from the perspective of the building, uh, across the street and up the street, down the street. It shows that there is some vacancy. Uh, these are the exterior conditions of the property. See wear and tear on the outside. The brick is actually in fairly decent condition, but the windows have been open. The property's been vacant and abandoned for some time now. The interior conditions shows a lot of the water damage it has kind of commenced over the years. And some of the, some attempt of renovation was made, but I, I, it was abandoned at some point. This is the basement conditions. It looks, the utilities have been stripped. Uh, we did look at this for a potential renovation, but it really, you know, with it, it's six units. And it's just not a viable, economically viable for us to do. Um, so our proposal would be to tear, to, to demolish the structure, finish gray, install topsoil and grass. Uh, there's a, there's a giant tree in the back that we're gonna protect and maintain. Uh, to do our best to kind of to maintain the tree canopy in the neighborhood. That's, that's our presentation.
Commissioner Members, any questions?
I move approval.
Uh, we have a motion. Do the second. Um, I just have a question. Is the councilman aware and in favor of this?
Uh, I'm not, you know, I, I'm not a hundred percent. I haven't talked to them personally. But the, there was, you know, we went through the design review process and it was um. It was approved by the design review committee. I, I really honestly don't know. This is a property that was on forfeiture and vacant and exposed to forfeit, uh, foreclosure sale for multiple times. And there was no interest.
Right. I mean, normally I would say I understand that, but when a structure isn't in horrible condition. Um, I think it's worthwhile touching base with the council people because of, you know, the relationship. I don't know, Charles, how you feel about it. But, but if a project, for a building that's kind of in okay shape like this, that has some value, even though I understand your point. I just think it's worth checking on those. The ones that are in terrible shape and falling down and they're, you know, clear, it's a different story for me.
Yeah, I, and I, and I just say I can't, I don't want to speak out of turn because I don't, we're, we're not a small organization, we have forty people that work here. I, I'm not involved in the acquisition process and those, those kind of decisions are made. This is a property that was on for uh, forfeiture list. And historically, we didn't have funding for these types of demolitions. We had limits that. So a lot of these properties have been kind of sitting and, and wait till, you know, we had an ability to. Or someone had the ability to, to address them. So I would say that I don't know a hundred percent if the council members been, been engaged. I would say that we have fairly good relationship with city council in general. We, we do a lot of side yard kind of um, projects where we deed the properties and they're done to the neighboring properties. And that requires council approval, but you know. So we do, we do interact with the council members on a regular basis. I would just say I don't personally know. Kim Steigerwald is our kind of manager of acquisitions. And I would guess that she's had, you know, properties like this.
Going forward, if there is one that is of this type, that, you know, is caught in collapse. And it has some value and it's this kind of structure where you know the difference, that it's worth a check. So just as it's going forward, it is something you should do.
I can actually, I can honest, obviously make that part of my presentation.
Okay.
Either way, I mean frankly, it's in, you know, terrible condition. I think your support of council is helpful to just show that it's, you know, us kind of addressing problems in the neighborhood.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments before we vote?
I would like to make a comment. I would suggest that um, that we add to the motion that Mr. Billingsley get. Uh, Billington, I'm sorry, get um, some approval from the council person. Uh, in reference to demolition on this building, because the brick on the outside is good. Someone did try to start to renovate the building and it may be a possibility that the council person may not be in agreement with this. So I would agree with you.
Um, did you make the motion originally? I can't remember who made the original. So we, I asked that who made the original motion, if they'd be willing to add that condition. It's basically a condition that you would talk to the councilman. If there is agreement or councilwoman, you would come back to staff. You don't have to come back to us and just verify that. And then you could move forward or not.
So I think I made the original motion and I'm fine with adding that to it.
Okay, so we have a motion and I think Charles, if you did the second, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Look, I'm sorry, Curry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item, thank you. Um, this is Near West Design Review, uh, two, zero, two, one, dash, zero, three, zero. It's a twelve unit apartment building, new construction on Fulton Road. Uh, Wesley, are you here, the only one to speak to this?
Yeah, good morning.
Okay, uh, do you swear to tell the whole truth, uh, nothing but the truth as usual answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do, yes. Uh, James Assimis from the uh, development team is here as well.
Okay, uh, can I hear a yes from them as well?
Yes, good morning.
Go ahead.
All right, thanks for having us. So, uh, as mentioned, we're proposing a twelve unit apartment structure on Fulton Road. Uh, we are south of Lorraine. And basically at the cross street of roughly Hancock and Horace Court. Uh, in Ohio City, next. So this project has went before the block club. It's also in front of Near West uh, this week or last week, I can't remember. Uh, and we have been presenting a schematic level to this point. You know, the zoning is too family in this area. But we are uh, getting support along the way here for this kind of density. And I, I think it's reflective of uh, the architecture itself fitting well into the uh, the neighborhood. And so uh, we're gonna present that to you today for a schematic review. Uh, and then uh, in the following months, uh, come back with a much more detailed set of renderings and plans and things like that. Um, so here, uh, you know, kind of going through the context photos here, we're on the west side of Fulton. So there will be a fair amount of morning sun on the east facade. And so here you see the uh, the homes that are to the, directly to the south of us. Uh, the property in question is to the right, which has got some trees and an existing house in the back. You can see the homes to the south are relatively recent additions uh, to the neighborhood. And uh, kind of uh, reflect the scale of what we're proposing as well. Next. So here we have the site plan. We have uh, seventy foot wide parcel along Fulton that goes back a hundred and five feet towards Japan Court to the west. And then Saiyan Court, uh, kind of T-bones into Japan. The structure that we're proposing is just under eighty-five hundred total square feet. And so um, in order to um, kind of reflect some of the surrounding context. And we wanted to break up the, the front facade into a series of elements that reflect the scale um, of the neighborhood. And then setbacks on the houses to the north of us kind of go back and forth a bit as it marches north on Fulton. So we wanted to, to play with that uh, orientation as well and then how the front facade relates to the Fulton uh, property line. So uh, for each of the first floor units, we have um, uh, front porches. Uh, that will be large enough to be usable, um, facing Fulton. Again, we wanna, you know, add to the pedestrian activity here and allow for um, if some habitable space outside. These first floor units uh, would also be ADA accessible. Uh, we can see just to the, uh, if you look at the bottom right corner of our property in question. We've got a ramp that leads up to those two porches. And then uh, for the northern units, there's another ramp that leads up, but those would be kind of hidden by vegetation. Uh, but still clearly usable. The twelve units that we're proposing here are uh, just under, basically within five to six hundred total square feet. And so uh, in a little bit, I think I'll have James explain, you know, the, the price point that we're looking at and the mix that we're looking uh, to execute here. In the rear of the property, we have a handful of parking spaces, uh, one of which would be ADA accessible. And then uh, a walkway that leads to the uh, to two stairways that lead up to the upper units. So the first floor units would be accessed from Fulton and then the uh, upper units be accessed from the rear. And if people are parking uh, in the back that have first floor units, we have a walkway that leads uh, to the front along the uh, southern side of the property. Uh, the setbacks we're looking at are five feet on either side, uh, the north and south. And then the front yard setbacks would be uh, basically the average setback of structures around us. Next. Uh, so here is the first floor plan. Uh, there are four units uh, on each floor. And so you can see to the right, we have the entries to the units. On the Fulton side, the living rooms would be there. So in terms of eyes on the street, kind of the active spaces, you know, that's typically what you want to see on the, the front of the residential units. Kitchen in the middle and then bedroom towards the rear. Uh, as I mentioned, there are stairways up to the upper levels, uh, and that's what you see here uh, towards the rear of the structure. Next. Second and third floor plans, very similar to the first floor, uh, those living rooms again facing Fulton. And then uh, the stairs just kind of lead straight up uh, as they ascend. Next. So here we have a, a very simple context elevation of the western side of Fulton. And you can see that um, you know, I, I think we're fitting in relatively well to the, the scale and height of the uh, surrounding context. You know, to the north, we have a fairly large double. And then to our south, we have the, the newer structures and the addition to an existing house directly to the south. Uh, and, and as I mentioned, we wanted to uh, really define each uh, element. Uh, as it's, as it pulls back and forth relative to Fulton. And so uh, we feel like the, the gable roof, uh, instead of doing a, two gables or a flat roof. We think that this breaks up the, the scale of this horizontally inverted. Next. Here is a rendered facade study here of that inste- elevation. And so we're looking to, to do a mix of green hues. You know, that, that color decision could change, but we are again looking to define each element uh, and make it uh, you know, stand on its own in many ways. Since these middle units don't have windows on the side, we really wanted to, to get as much glazing on this front facade as possible. And then the uh, side units would have glazing down the uh, the north and south facades. Um, at each entry that you can see here, uh, on the first level, we have a canopy that defines each of those entrances. Um, and of course, uh, you know, provides some coverage for rain or snow. The porches themselves, uh, we do have uh, kind of railings at each one of them. It's not for building code reason. It's really there just to, to really define that space as, you know, semi-private space for, for the residents. Next. Uh, here's the south facade or south elevation. On the first floor, we're gonna have a ship lap vertically oriented uh, lap side, lap uh, cement board. Uh, and then the upper two levels would be horizontally lapped. So we wanted to again, define the first floor, then uh, the upper levels above. Next. Uh, here's the west elevation. Uh, we would not be seeking any sort of height variance here. We are within the uh, zoning guidelines as, as they currently stand. Next. Next. And so uh, here's just a very simple material palette. Again, the lap cement board. Some areas of metal panel, handrails, smooth finished concrete. And then black fiberglass windows and some facade lighting. Leave, not sure if there's anything else after this. Uh, next.
This is for um, schematic approval or final approval? What was this?
Schematic, correct.
What, were there any comments, relevant comments you want to mention from design review or was it approved as presented?
Yeah, the, the, for design review, they asked that we add uh, some larger trees into the planting areas in front of the porches. To provide shade, um, which we thought was a really good idea. And then uh, some sort of bike infrastructure, uh, bike racks in the rear of the property. And that was really it.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Members, any questions or comments?
I'm sure.
Move approval.
We have a motion, do the second.
Looks like we have Director Collier with his hand raised.
Okay, let's get the second first.
I'll second.
Okay, the second. Um, uh, any more conversation, Director Collier?
Real quick, I just want to mention this because uh, on that, even on that last case, you know, with the uh, focus on universal design, which is great. And you know, having the uh, accessibility. Um, and I know we are focusing on exterior, but I think it will be helpful to include um, in your package. As this goes through design review, because this is three stories. You know, how the internal space, universal design is not just about the exterior, but it is about the interior. So just thinking about that internal space and how that internal space uh, accommodates. Um, you know, one who, you know, may need, you know, a certain uh, special needs internally, right? So it's one thing to have the, the ramps and things on the outside, but just think about internally how the space works. You know, for someone if they were in a uh, uh, compromised condition.
Absolutely, thank you.
We had a motion and a second. Can we call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries with schematic approval and thank you. Um, it's a wonderful project. You've been doing great stuff, Wesley, so thank you.
Thanks, have a nice day.
Uh, this is the Near West uh, Design Review, Clark Recreation Center seeking final approval. Um, and this is Gavin from City Architecture. Anyone else speaking to this?
Yeah, hello. Uh, we also have Mark Duluk, uh, the architect from the city on the line. He's going to do the quick walkthrough of the project for us.
I don't need to swear I'm in, but I do need to swear you in. So uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as usual answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, good morning, everyone. This is for the renovations and additions to the Clark Recreation Center, Clark Avenue, five, seven, oh, six, in the Clark Fulton neighborhood. Um, this is one of our historic bathhouses, former bathhouses. Part of the roots of both our Recreation Center program and Department of Public Health, because they used to contain clinics. Um, we can just go quickly through the existing context slides. This is where the location is. It's on the westerly edge of uh, Clark Avenue before you get to sixty-fifth. It's a very dense, vibrant and vital neighborhood. If you're all familiar with it, there's the U-Haul there up at the corner on Clark. The other good news that some of you may be aware of is that um, we had a, we successfully garnered a grant. For creating a new park to the west of this building. So um, this design uh, anticipated that. Um, and uh, responds to uh, that future park where the existing parking lot is. That's just the streetscape buildings from nineteen oh eight. It's our oldest uh, bathhouse and actually our oldest uh, Exton Rec Center. It uh, had additions over the years. Particularly, there was the uh, small pool and locker room addition in the front that was sometime in the nineteen thirties. So, but the original building is the gold brick colored with the big overhanging brackets and the uh, and the gym, gymnasium in the background. There's an existing parking lot that again will be the park and we will be utilizing train court in the back of the building for access to new parking along train court. This is mostly a walk to center. It's very heavily used by a lot of the seniors and kids in the neighborhood. And train court to the north is a very, when school lets out at Clark Elementary, large groups of kids come over to the center utilizing train court and walking that way. So our design is also responding to that. Please, next slides please. That shows the site plan and the property that's involved. Again, the properties to the west will be part of the new park, but that's basically the existing footprint. Next slide please. And this shows the site plan with the current parking lot and it shows the existing rec center and some small additions. One of the goals for most of our projects is to provide full accessibility, especially where there's a lot of seniors using these. So there will be an elevator in the building. The current building is a split level design. And what we're doing is through some floor demolition and some rationalization of the circulation, we are creating a fully accessible facility with a fully accessible entrance on the street. Next slide. These are some of the landscaping elements we're using at a small landscaped area along Clark as well as a small landscaped area. Next slide please. To the, to the back of the property over by the northwest corner. Next slide please. These are the light fixtures we're putting along the street next to the entrances, the bikes racks and our standard city of Cleveland rec center and park sign. In addition, we have a large Clark sign that is made of metal and has the large letters and stands in front of the new entry vestibule. Excellent. This just shows quickly the plans down in the basement. There's art space and fitness space and a resource center. Next slide please. And this just shows the various program elements. It's got a swimming pool to which we're opening up with garage doors on the west to a new patio that's used for break times during the pool, writing a new pool office and a new gym office. Really basically making sure that we have all the staffing programming accommodated in this. And there's the existing gym, but we're reconfiguring it with a blue circulation and creating new locker rooms that per code actually feed directly into the existing swimming pool. Next slide please. There's a little mezzanine which we're providing a second means of egress for that overlooks the gym and is actually pretty heavily used because it's such a small gym. Next please. That just shows the roof plan. This is the presentation we gave to neighbor designer review, which as you probably know, approved as presented. And these are just some 3D images showing how, if you can imagine where the parking lot is and where the existing print shop building that is going to be removed, that will be a new park with a row of parking along train court there to the north. So the idea here was along the streetscape to kind of continue with the additions and the collage spirit of how this building was done in the past, we're adding the new entry vestibule. We're adding, turning one of the former entrances because all these always, all these bathhouses had two entrances because they were machines for gender segregation. We're creating a new entry there on the front. But this addition to the west is really just like a blue wall with varying heights that separates that patio that needs to be secure for that. But it's also intended to open up the pool and visually create a kind of a new front with some color. It's a blue glazed brick that we like to use in all of our rec projects. It's our rec blue that will be facing the new park, which will be going through its own separate design process and community engagement process. Next slide. That's just showing the elevations and how the existing and the new with the new glass vestibule. It's kind of a vitrine to feature the existing pedimented neoclassical entry that was actually added when they built the pool. So we're sort of featuring that, but also creating a vestibule for energy and creating a more welcoming presence with doors that approach from both the east and the west. This is cutting the new garage doors that can be opened up in the good weather to create a much more indoor outdoor feel and make the pool a much nicer, a much nicer amenity for the neighbors so that especially in the summertime, it can function more like an outdoor pool as well. It shows the elements along the street with that glass vitrine, the low blue walls, and there's that new little terrace wall for the former man's entrance that comes out. And that just shows a color rendering of how the west elevation facing the future park will work. Next slide please. This shows our palette of materials. We are replacing the roof with the synthetic play tile system, which gets us a lovely warranty and actually looks very good. And there's the different colors of the brick, our standard recreation buff and our recreation blue aluminum panels in storefront and then precast coatings. Next slide please. That just shows how we're restoring masonry and there's the view along the street with that new glassy vestibule and the signage and the balcony. That shows how the view from the southwest works. This is our little pool terrace and the pool office. So we get more more staff eyes on both the pool terrace as well as on the street. That's the pool office looking on the street. So we're very excited about this project and ready to go out to bid.
Yes, thank you.
Director Collier has his hand raised.
Okay, Director Collier.
Yeah, just real quick, you know, great job. Obviously this building has been there for some time and the restoration and tasteful additions are great. And, you know, I love the Clark lettering on the front. One question about the play spaces for small children. That's so important, particularly in a community like this. We have a lot of, you know, moms with small kids. Is that anticipated just to be in the park section when that process goes through to have the play spaces out there?
Yes, that's the anticipate. There's the, with the addition of the land to the west, there's opportunity for a variety of scale of spaces and the site development crew, Jim and Mike and Mike here in our shop is working on a lot of really exciting conceptual ideas for how we can accommodate play for all ages and as I said, there are a lot of seniors in this neighborhood. So those spaces will be primarily within the park spaces. So.
Thank you.
Commission members, any other questions or comments?
I'll move approval.
Oh, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. I will say I think the operable kind of garage door type glass from the pool to the pool deck is extraordinary and innovative and super, super amenity that I think we need more of in the city that really attracts people because it's a true attraction. It's very cool. So thank you. And and I think we can just take the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Great.
Thank you. Happy Labor Day, everyone.
I think we have a couple more. Downtown Flats Design Review. This is 55 Public Square and West Third Street. This is final approval for 55 Public Square. Craig Brown, anyone else speaking to this?
We have three other people in the room, Doug Price the fourth, Tim Reed and Brad Cochran, although probably I'll do most of the talking. Doug might do a little.
Okay, so I'll score you all in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as usual answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do. I do. I do. I do.
There you go. Welcome. All right. You got the floor.
Thanks. We got the floor. Okay, well, this is a new building that was purchased by, a new project that's purchased by the K and D group. We're kind of the northwest corner of Public Square. It's where the old John Q's Steakhouse used to be. I'm not sure exactly how many stories, but K and D intends to do about 50% commercial, 50% residential and return the restaurant. It's been rented out to Rockaway on a fair Fahrenheit. So we're pretty excited about that. Next slide. I'll go through these pretty quickly. Okay, these are actually not photographs. These are laser images that I put in. Gives you a little bit of a view of the plaza in the front, wide open, not much there. Pretty unattractive. You can see on the right kind of a streetscape level and the bottom picture in the middle shows what you're going to see shortly is a connection to Public Square. Next slide. If you were walking from Public Square, the center of Public Square, walking to the northwest, the long leg there of that sidewalk connects visually directly to our main entrance. So that's one of the things we wanted to tie into. Next slide. So these are part of our concept is connecting to that sidewalk at Public Square and then highlighting the three major entrances. The large circle in the middle is the main connection to the building with a large canopy that will stay. Over to the right is the entrance, pretty nondescript at the moment to the bank, the First National Bank, that's going to stay. Over to the left is where we intend to put the entrance to the restaurant, very close to where the old John Q's used to be. There is one other entrance here. It's the kind of circular revolving door to the top left here of this plaza. That's going to be kept open and used for residences as a kind of a private entrance for them. Next slide. Quick demolition. The main thing here to see is that we're removing all the pavement. Most of this project is on K and D's property, but we are removing all the pavement in the front of the plaza, all the way up to the curb, which we are going to raise. And then along West Third Street, we will keep the curb in place and remove everything, the entire sidewalk, all the way up to the end of K and D's property there. The two kind of important things to see here are the two little bump outs that were on the John Q's Steakhouse are going to be removed. Next slide please. This gives you an idea of our site plan. You can see the main entrance in the front with that angle that picks up the walkway from Public Square into the main part of the building. The other two entrances, the bank to the right and the restaurant to the left. We'll show it a little bit later here, but we have a series of planters in the front, kind of long linear planters. I think there's five of them for one tree each, one for two trees, one for three. And then in front of the restaurant, we have kind of a, I won't say a serpentine wall, but it's kind of a a wall that moves in and out a little bit with the same pattern here. And there'll be a planter there with two large trees. We have kind of a dark gray paver that runs around is the border, which I'll show you those in a little bit, all the way around the property and it will go down West Third Street. We have a lighter paver or a different color paver in the middle of these entrance ways that will mimic what we see in Public Square. And then we have a kind of a red band that works its way through there on a grid pattern. We picked that, that's in the plaza on the West Third Street, we've picked that up, that red color in some permeable sidewalk features there. So which we've gone, we've walked, walked the site with John Peck from Sidewalk Commission, Sidewalk Department. I've spoken to Tom Boyer from engineering and with Jennifer Kip, the city arborist, and everybody seems happy with this. So next slide please. That's just a, obviously a color rendering of this. Next slide. Okay, here's, here's the column of sustainable planters. If you look at the typical drainage planter on the top, what we're doing is leaving one side of the planter open that will accept runoff from the plaza and take it into the planter. It'll be, these are, these are low planters, probably only about three inches high. Well, they are, they're three inches high and nine inches wide. And we allow these storm drains to work their way in. We also have around these, we have a cable railing system that we're going to use. If you look over the black square rail to the left, that image, that's the, the top rail is primarily used in the restaurant area. And the other parts of it were to keep, keep dogs out and for better, lack of better term, protect our plant material. We'll have lights in each one and irrigation heads. So we're trying to protect those in the future. Next slide. Landscape plan, we made a couple of changes or a change after my discussion with Jennifer and we ended up using some of her comments that were on, on West Third Street, where you see the, the red permeable paver that will basically connect the two planters there with an underground area. So we can have a large area of planting mix, which she was pretty excited by. And in the front, we have a mix of street trees, mostly lindens, and then we have smaller ornamental trees along West Third Street. We'll get rid of the honey locusts that were in bad locations and not doing all that well and switching them to lindens where we think they'll do better once we protect the plant beds a little bit and irrigate them. Next slide. Pavers, the top picture on the left is once again that paving pattern from the walk on Public Square. We will not be using the same color, but we're going to attempt to use that same pattern. And the color chip is there from Schofield concrete colors. The banding, these, there's a bigger difference in these grays than it shows up here on the screen, at least our screen. But the banding will be the color chip in the middle and then obviously the red grid pattern to the right. Slide. Light fixtures, we're basically putting on the light fixtures in the front of the building. Going to, if you see, if you look at the plan, the four large circles, and these are not to scale, it's just so you can see it graphically. The four large circles are 18 foot high pedestrian lights. There's a, the luminaire is on the right kind of circle, what we're going to use. And at the light fixture circled in the middle section, those will either be 18 foot high or if you look at the smaller ones, the rest of the ones we're showing other than those four are 12 foot high pedestrian lights. The image to the far left is an eight foot high bowerd with about two foot high light wand at the top, kind of looks like a little torch. We're going to have, what do we have? I think we have seven of those around the dining area. We also have a light on every tree shining up out of the planters. And we have, we have a little few steps here, which I'll explain, I think on the next slide or but we have, we have two steps and we have light fixtures on the steps also. Okay, so this is kind of explaining the restaurant. It's about a thousand square feet of, of actual outdoor dining. And whenever they bring the And whenever they bring the building in for presentation, there'll be also a rooftop garden on the old John Q's structure as well. So there'll be two outdoor dining areas. If you look right in the, the top plan, you look at the rectilinear paving pattern here or the entry pattern, that's the, the two small steps. There's the doorway is right at the corner of the building and there's a 10 to 12 inch difference in grade from the sidewalk and you can actually go out and see it. If you would walk the street, you can see where the floor elevation is substantially higher. So we had to put a couple of steps in here. But what we did do is we left an accessible route that will come from the main plaza. If you, if you decided you wanted to walk on grade, you could go to the right and you'll see it better on one of the renderings. There's a walkway coming between the dining area and the steps, which is the width of the double doors coming in the building. We felt there's plenty of room in here for people to congregate at the entrance. And that's some of the changes we made after talking with the planning department. You look down at the sketch at the bottom, that basically highlights a little bit more of the, where the doorway is and the stairway and you can see the dimensions on the accessible routes or the on-grade route, seven or eight feet. We're using two big urns that will set on either side of the stairs with obviously floral plants in them, as well as the, as well as the planters with the, the street trees. The one, the one planter is connected to the dining area. And then around the, around the left, we've got that kind of zigzag wall that will be planted with several larger trees and some understory stuff. Most of these planters will be about half perennials and ground covers and half left for K and D to do annual, annual plantings in. Next slide. The rest, the rest of these are just renderings. Obviously it's from the, the front of the building. We are, the building itself, when the restaurant comes in, is going to, the facade's all gonna change. It's gonna be a lot of black and white, which is why we've used the gray and the black or dark gray features that we've used, light fixtures and cable rail system. Next slide. That gives you an idea of the, the front entrance there. Those pots are gonna be a little bigger on either side of the stairway. But you can see that there's quite a bit of room in a double, double doorway there. You can see the dining area beyond and the on-grade walkway. Next, the next slide will show that on-grade walkway better. Gives you a feel coming from the front entrance and going right into the restaurant. Way the restaurant's gonna be handled here is that people will go directly into the restaurant and then they will come out a set of four doors, double doors, double, two double doors, so that the control of the restaurant will be, the outdoor dining will be from inside and we will have an emergency mangate at the far end there. There's one more slide here. Next slide. Gives you just a little bit of, of an idea of that corner. So, slide will say we're at the end.
Thank you. Um, so, Commission members, any question? And I think you said this, but eventually the restaurant renovation will come back later. This is happening first, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's just the plaza and the lighting.
Director Collier, has his hand raised?
Director Collier?
Yes ma'am, real quick, this is obviously important as it relates to how this speaks to Sherwin-Williams. So I'm going to suggest, because I'm not sure that that conversation has happened with speaking to the Sherwin-Williams team and your team. West Third is gonna be a critical facade because the goal is to obviously activate that given the Sherwin-Williams HQ is gonna sit on West Third and the garage facility is gonna be north of that with some ground floor retail. The other thing is with the smaller structure that Sherwin-Williams is proposing closer to Shaker Square, it will literally face off with this particular facade in this plaza. And I was wondering, Madam Chair, you know, this street, given the fact that it's so short, we need to really start rethinking how we can rethink these smaller streets like this. Even if it's with decorated paving, where you can have sort of this plaza feel, even though it's a through street, but really starting to rethink how we can have these short streets kind of serve as kind of flexible spaces, particularly when you have used like a restaurant, a plaza and even a condition like you have with Sherwin-Williams. I think that this stretch of street can be really rethought. So I want to just put that out there. So if there can be a conversation with the Sherwin-Williams folks and also some dialogue about this stretch of street here coming from Shaker Square on the West Third and how that street plane could be treated differently, even if it's a different paving treatment, it can really start to feel like a, a flexible, flexible street, street for cars and, you know, pedestrians and cyclists.
Okay, Commission members, any other comments or questions?
So, is Director Collier asking us to table this?
No, no.
Yeah, I think the staff should be doing some coordination. I think there's room for that because the building renovation is not quite ready yet. So I think he's just suggesting that they start to collaborate. But I think that's really the responsibility of staff to convene that.
We're certainly happy to talk to them.
There's, there's been communication between, you know, us at K and D and Sherwin-Williams already. There's, we've had meetings prior to this with them. We're, we're in communication with them on, on coordinating both sides of the street.
Good. Any other comments or questions from Commission members or a motion?
I'll move approval with the caveat that staff work with the developers and designers on this project and Sherwin-Williams in a continuing conversation and dialogue.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second? So we'll take the motion. I'll say before the motion that is really huge improvement and exciting and starting to signal the, I think some of the things that we always hope that both Public Square and even Sherwin-Williams would do, which would be to start to bring back street life. So I thank you all and excited about the restaurant and the outdoor cafe. And I think outdoor cafes on squares like this are extremely important. And I don't think, I, I think it's the kind of retail we need more of. So you guys are doing it and doing it first. So thank you. So we can take, we can take the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Freddie Scott.
Slife.
Yes.
Motion carries. I don't think we have anything else unless Freddie has something to talk about before we adjourn.
Just a couple of items I want to mention. We're going to be putting together a summary of the census data to present to Planning Commission. Obviously the census numbers are out and there's some surprises. And we want to make sure that we get an opportunity to provide information to the commission in the form of maps. And we want to do a presentation. So that's gonna be coming up. The other thing is form-based zoning, the draft code we want to present to the Planning Commission, obviously would have to go through law, so we're not done with the legal side of that, which is really gonna be an interesting process, but do want to present the actual draft code for the three areas to the Planning Commission. And then lastly, really quick, there is several plan adoptions that are coming up that I've alluded to in previous meetings. So expect to have those as special meetings that are gonna be coming up in addition to our regularly scheduled meetings. So those are the only three items I have today.
Thank you very much, Freddie. I'd like the record to reflect that this meeting ended at 11:00 AM. To please put that in the minutes. So thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Goodbye.